Special work session of November 16th, 2015 to order. We do have a forum, public forum. Individuals may address the city council on items not included on the agenda. Speakers are required to state their name and address for council record and limit their remarks to three minutes or less. Speakers are asked, are requested to refrain their comments around items that fall within the authority of the city council. The community, the city council will not take official action on the items discussed at this time. I may place the item on file, take the matter under advisement, refer the matter to staff or committee for a future report, or direct the matter to be placed on an upcoming agenda. Is anyone wish to speak?
Hello? Is this supposed to work?
No, it's fine.
Just talk.
Just talk, yep.
Okay.
Name and address.
Yep. My name is Kate Vassler. I live at 718 Second Street Southeast. And I'm here to make a case for the preservation of Hurley Hall. I'm one of the signers of petition for it. I would like you to picture this. You're driving in from the south to the town. And to your right, immediately your eye is drawn to a architectural splendor on the Franciscan campus. And it's nestled in a peaceful setting. This is your welcome to Little Falls. This, this is where beauty and peace reach you. Now, Hurley Hall has its own beauty. And a historical case has already been made to preserve it. However, the matter boils down to cost. Cost of preserving versus cost of deconstructing. Now, at the time, the sisters, the Franciscan Sisters were wanting to save Hurley Hall, the preservationist option was not considered, nor were the sisters aware of grant money available. I believe this is what the petitioners would like addressed before a final decision is taken. Because if the cost of preserving is the cost of deconstruction, plus, let's say, a few thousand dollars more covered by available grant money, wouldn't it be reasonable to consider preserving the building?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. Is there a microphone I can use? Right, I'll just project. It's not a problem for me. So my time starts once I state my name and address?
Name and address, yep.
Alright, my name's Dustin Simmons. My address is 210 Sixth Street Southwest. And of course, good evening to everybody, citizens, mayor, and council members. I'm here, of course, as well to make the case for the preservation of Hurley Hall, what obviously one of our community's single most historical buildings. It was the very first permanent building on the Franciscan Sisters campus and the birthplace of St. Gabriel's Hospital, St. Otto's, and the Franciscan Sisters themselves. Now, Franciscan Sisters have touched everyone in this community in one way or another, whether it be through their different ministries or initiatives, but the Friends of Hurley Hall have come together to work with the Franciscan Sisters to do what we can to find a way to save this important and beautiful and historic building. Through our petition collection, we have found that there's significant consensus among the community that, you know, something wants to be done to at least, in an effort to save this building. And we're open, we're hoping we can help the Franciscan Sisters become open to considering the various options that could not only possibly turn it from a negative, but towards a money generator for us. There are many possible options. And of course, we're also not ignoring to the scale of the project evidence. I mean, there's a lot of work that will go into it, but we are very dedicated to making those. There's those commitments, there's no shortage of passion there. The Franciscan Sisters have the ultimate say, but in the past, they've had the forethought to sell St. Gabriel's Hospitals and St. Otto's and the Alverna Apartments so that these services could remain without burdening the sisters. Now, if Hurley Hall no longer fits their needs, there are many worthy organizations within this community that could make use of this space, or even if we could possibly find a way for it to remain positive as a money generator for the Franciscan Sisters. And back in 1890, when the, 91, when the building was built, Little Falls had just a population over 2,300, and the Franciscan Sisters took the time to raise their funds to build the building because at that time, they were just working out of a small little shack. And not only does this building represent a watershed moment for the sisters, but our community as well, so it's important that we work in their honor to continue that mission of, excuse me, to work in their mission to continue to make sure that we are able to provide the services for this community. Now, honorable members of our council, I urge you to stand with us on this quest, and we'll take time and take cooperation, but if we can fulfill the needs of the sisters and this community, and by saving this building. This community made a great mistake a couple of years ago by hastily demolishing the Dewey Radkey House, but let us not make that same mistake now. But I'll leave you just with these few words from the namesake that Hurley Hall carries, Sister Teresa Hurley. Now, do the best you can and leave the rest to God. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we don't have microphones early.
Good question, Louis. Good question.
You didn't have an issue last week speaking with no microphone?
This, so my voice, would you please? I do have a microphone, please?
Can't she sit at the next to Greg where one of those microphones is?
They don't work either. The whole system is turned off.
Oh. This is a disgrace.
Does anyone else wish to speak while they work on that?
People can't speak with a microphone. What a disgrace.
A number of us are doing the same thing together.
It also greatly disadvantages the hearing impaired, or people who have a hard time hearing, like Teresa. I could barely, my camera and my really good smartphone could barely pick up Ben Olson when he spoke at the public hearing.
How long is this, you're trying to get this turned on?
Right, but I'm just saying, you know, you have equipment, why not use it?
If you want to use three minutes, go up there.
I'm out of line?
Yep.
Right. Because you don't like hearing what I say. Again.
Is that one turned on?
That was me, sorry.
Do you want to just sit over here? We might not be able to get the podium microphone to work, but this microphone works.
Thank you very much for doing this for me. Hi, I'm Lois Machi, 13834-179th Street, November 16th, 2015. Dear city officials, our group, the Friends of Hurley Hall, sincerely appreciate having the opportunity to speak and share our requests and concerns with you this evening. Members of our group spoke in front of the Little Falls Planning Meeting on October 5th, and I spoke with members of the Little Falls Heritage Preservation Commission on November 2nd. Last week, we dropped off a written request to staff at the City of Little Falls. Due to the holiday last week, we understand that we are not able to speak at the Little Falls City Council meeting later this evening. However, we understand we can share our letter in this planning meeting. We have sent a carbon copy of this letter to the Franciscan Sisters of Little Falls, the National Park Service, the Minnesota Historical Society, of which, of course, is the State Historic Preservation Office of Minnesota, and the Preservation Alliance of Minnesota. Although the letter indicates that we request having a written status of any Hurley Hall review process by this evening, due to the holiday last week and the receipt of the request, we are requesting a written status by November 26th, 2015. Thank you again, and here is our letter. Dear Marisoka, Mr. Roddimer and Mr. Opas, as you are aware, the City of Little Falls, Minnesota, is very fortunate to have a strong, unique sense of place providing considerable benefits to area citizens and visitors alike through its industries, businesses, environmental resources, and its remarkable history. Little Falls is a certified local government, a CLG, a program jointly administered by the National Park Service, NPS, and State Historic Preservation Offices, in this case, the Minnesota Historical Society, that allows the city to receive enhanced professional and financial assistance from the state and federal governments to help retain our irreplaceable heritage for future generations. 36 CFR 61. According to the NPS, CLGs must meet minimum requirements that include enforcing of appropriate state or local legislation for the designation and protection of historic properties. NPS indicates that in most cases, this is done in the form of local ordinances and facilitating public participation in the local preservation. As the first building and birthplace of so many key community initiatives such as St. Gabriel's Hospital, St. Otto's Home, and St. Francis High School, Hurley Hall at the Franciscan Sisters of Little Falls Campus in southeast Little Falls has an iconic place in this city's history. Hurley Hall was designated-
Thanks, Lois, your three minutes are up tonight.
Robin, I think another-
Robin, hang on.
Another Hurley Hall person.
Sorry. Good.
Yeah.
I'm Rich Machi, 13834-179th Street, Little Falls, Minnesota. Hurley Hall is designated a local landmark by the City of Little Falls in 2002. Demolition of local landmarks must go through a public process, Little Falls City Code 5.06, and include review and approval by Little Falls Heritage Preservation Commission, Little Falls City Code 2.33. Hurley Hall has also been determined to meet the territorial eligibility for listing in a national register of historic places, 36 CFR 60, by Minnesota Historical Society, the State Historic Preservation Office of Minnesota in 2002. Concerned citizens, cultural resource, and planning professionals, preservationists, and others of the form, Friends of Hurley Hall, out of deep and sincere concern for the long-term future of the Franciscan Sisters of Little Falls, the regional community, and this landmark building. Franciscan Sisters of Little Falls have indicated that a master plan of the building's structures and facilities at the campus would be undertaken in the next few years. While the Franciscan Sisters of Little Falls have stated their intention to demolish or deconstruct Hurley Hall, Friends of Hurley Hall believe that action should be postponed so the buildings can be assessed in the context of the master plan's recommendations. All the buildings in Little Falls, such as the Buckman Building and Academy of Holy Angels, were able to utilize the federal historic preservation tax incentives and bring needed construction, design jobs, and revenue into the region. Programs are stronger than ever and now include state historic tax credits. But these programs, buildings in worst conditions and scenarios in Hurley Hall are rehabilitated throughout the country on a regular basis. No historical architecture or preservation plan has yet been obtained by the Franciscan Sisters of Little Falls. The vendor chosen by the Franciscan Sisters of Little Falls mostly focuses on modern construction. The loss of Hurley Hall, the first building on a campus and the first center of so many ministries, may certainly jeopardize the marked ability of entire property since this significant loss, but potentially prevent the complex from being eligible for the national register and therefore many of the key financial programs. Approximately 90% of people on the ass signed a petition requesting that the Franciscan Sisters of Little Falls retain Hurley Hall. There is strong community support for its preservation. Many people we have spoken with cannot believe that such a magnificent historical building is scheduled for demolition. We, the members of Friends of Hurley Hall, are requesting meeting at the City Council Planning Meeting on November 16th, 2015, and being on the agenda of the regular City Council meeting on November 16th, 2015, where individuals can briefly express their concerns for Hurley Hall. Friends of Hurley Hall request that during either the planning meeting or the City Council meeting, a written status of where Hurley Hall is in the review process by Little Falls Heritage Preservation Commission-
Thanks, Richard, time's up.
This is mine. I'm Rachel Schilling, Fort Ripley, Minnesota. Do you need the street address?
Yes, please.
25751-185th Avenue, Fort Ripley. The Friends of Hurley Hall request that during either the planning meeting or the City Council meeting, a written status of where Hurley Hall is in the review process by the Little Falls Heritage Preservation Commission be provided to Friends of Hurley Hall. Our group would like to be designated as an interested consulting party during the process, and request that copies of all relevant applications, permits, forms, and feasibility studies be made available for viewing by the public in a public place such as the Little Falls City Hall or the Little Falls Carnegie Library, so interested individuals and parties can effectively comment as necessary and help ensure that the procedure is properly followed before any demolition occurs. Friends of Hurley Hall appreciates all of your assistance regarding this important matter. If you have any questions, please contact Lois Machi at 320-632-5397. Sincerely, Friends of Hurley Hall. And karma copies have been sent to Lois mentioned that. Just wondering, like, how many, how many of the city officials have been inside Hurley Hall? Anybody that's been inside there for one of their classes or retreats or meetings and different things that they have in there continuing to the present? I know a few of us have gone in there, and it's over to the public for classes, and anybody can go in there and be some friends by a line event, taking yoga classes, and other people have silver sneakers and massage therapy, friends I'm going to teach there. And it's, you know, it's being used, and it's very beautiful inside, and it's very usable. According to Dustin and some other officials, I guess, there's been many buildings around the country that have been in much, much worse condition, that have been rehabilitated and used financially feasible. And there's a lot of money out there if the Franciscan Sisters want to ask for it. And I think as a community, we can work together to think of some options and some alternatives so that our, Little Falls is great about, you know, saving history in this area, and I think it would be something that our community would be wanting to do and beneficial for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mariah, 25751-185th Avenue, Fort Ripley. To be honest, I just started learning about this building the last few months, and I will say though, it doesn't make me really sad that the generation to come can see this beautiful historic landmark. And what will our generation and our children have for historic buildings or resources if they continue to be demolished at this rate? I may only be 14, but I do believe that this building will do a lot more good hits here than if it's destroyed. There are many things that are fixable today, but Hurley Hall, if it is demolished, is not one of them.
We have some pictures from the inside and outside of Hurley Hall, if anybody wants to see it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Robin Hinsel, 807 First Street Southeast, and I won't be in a microphone, however, that should have been included tonight. It wasn't that long ago that President Don Klinker sat right there where Jeremy Klink, Jerry, Jeremy, excuse me, Hanford is sitting, and told the audience that anybody can speak during a work session. That's recorded. That matters. Because tonight, the rules were changed again, and that matters. Mayor Zinkle learned early on that Coburns can get favors from the city. All they have to do is ask, and it shall be given. The sign ordinance 801 was changed in 2006 to add number 128, which allowed triple the signage in B3 districts, which Coburns Superstore sits in, and of course, our mayor is the manager there, and was during that time as well, because of a request for additional signage from Coburns, and there's 128. From the official city newspaper viewpoint, taxpayers foot the bill when cities take it to court. It would behoove, this is a quote out of that article, "It would behoove all sides to work these matters out before the city attorneys start their meters ticking." Bruce Smith, Bill Anderson, and I did go to council first. It fell on deaf ears, as usual. City officials can't afford to make legal mistakes, and those who sue need to do so only as a last resort. And I feel it will continue until Kemen and company understand that by not issuing a stop-work order to roach to straighten this all out there, directly making the city liable for any illegalities. The citizens don't have the first whack at stopping lawsuits. City officials do. First, because they make the decisions that can generate suits. Second, because they are required by law to do what's lawful. And third, because they have the resources to check the law before they act. Whether misconduct or mistake, the people administering our laws know they won't be held liable for misconduct or mistake. If you're part of the in-group, they don't enforce the laws or follow the rules. If you're not, then the law gets followed, and they show their power. In a city manager form of government, there's an educated person who might lose their job. In most municipal governments, there are no consequences, and audits cost money, so crime has no consequence. And that's from a former law enforcement instructor of 30 years. Little Falls Planning Commission unanimously recommends approving sign ordinance. The proposed amendments included exceptions for signs on city property, even after the zoning administrator said lawyers caution about this. The city had previously faced allegations that the ordinance was not consistently enforced. There's a difference between allegation and documented evidence. Once again, I urge this council to delete the sign ordinance or risk future lawsuits that are sure to come. Today, I sent, actually, it was yesterday, I sent a request-
Time's up, Ron, thank you.
Okay, that's for next time.
Anyone else wish to speak? Here you go, move on to regular council items. Dead levy presentation, David? He just walked out, maybe he went on.
Did you make it into your packet earlier?
For those of you that don't know me, I'm David Brown. I've been the city's financial consultant for, I don't know, 20 years or something like that. Staff suggested that maybe I come to the work session and just talk a little bit about the city's financial condition and debt levels, and if, in particular, the council had any questions, please, this would be a good time to talk about it. It's been a while since I've done something like this. I think the last time I was here talking in general about financial stuff was way back in 07, when there was a council change, and really a lot of concern and angst about city's debt levels that are approaching capital projects, and spent quite a bit of time talking about stuff. And we'll talk a little bit tonight on how things may have changed over the last eight or nine years since that time, and how things look now compared to then. But we'll say that I'm not here with any particular agenda or message, okay? If you have any particular concern or problem to be here, if the council does, you know, this is a good time to talk about it. That's a little different than when I was here in 07, because I think there were some policy issues and concerns to talk about. Thought you'd be interested in, in the handle at the top, just a little bit of history of how things have been changing in Little Falls relative to property values and tax rates over time. Here's a chart that shows how market values have changed when back to 03. You see through the first part of the last decade, through about 08, the city experienced nice, strong growth in market value, the value that the county assessor says all the property in Little Falls is worth. We hit 08, and the housing crisis, financial crisis hit the, hit the state, and it affected the growth of valuations. It stopped them, and for the next half decade, generally, Little Falls saw a decline. That is true in every community I've worked with, okay? 08 through 13 or so, just, I don't know, community that didn't see at least stopping of value increases. Most saw a decrease, years was about 10%. And now, we're starting to see a bump back in valuations. You're probably a year later than most of the communities I look at, but it's nice to see that property values are once again rebounding. We're kind of back at 08 levels now, although we're at. The second column shows tax capacity. That's the measure of taxable value. It converts market value based on property classification, so generally, it tracks with changes in market value. Market value goes up, taxable value is up. Notice a couple of, as your market value dropped in 08, tax capacity dropped. You see a big change in tax capacity from 2012 to 2013, where we lost almost 20% of value. That was caused-
Been inside there for one of their classes or retreats or meetings and different things that they have in there continuing to the present. I know a few of us have gone in there and it's over to the public for classes and anybody can go in there and be some friends by my event taking yoga classes and other people have silver sneakers and massage therapy friends I'm gonna teach there. And it's, you know, it's being used and it's very beautiful inside and it's very usable according to Dustin and some other officials. I guess there's been many buildings around the country that have been in much, much worse condition that have been rehabilitated and used and financially feasible. And there's a lot of money out there if the Franciscan Sisters want to ask for it. And I think as a community, we can work together to think of some options and some alternatives so that our, Little Falls is great about, you know, saving history in this area and I think it would be something that our community would be wanting to beneficial for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mariah, 25751185 at the Avenue of Fort Hurley. To be honest, I just started learning about this building the last few months and I will say though, it doesn't make me really sad that the generation to come didn't see this beautiful historic landmark. And what will our generation and our children have for historic buildings or resources if they continue to be demolished at this rate? I may only be 14, but I do believe that this building will do a lot more good hits here than if it's destroyed. There are many things that are fixable today, but Hurley Hall, if it is demolished, is not one of them.
We have some pictures from the inside and outside of Hurley Hall if anybody wants to see it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Robin Hensel, 807 First Street Southeast, and I won't be in a microphone, however, that should have been included tonight. It wasn't that long ago that President Don Klinker sat right there where Jeremy Hanford is sitting and told the audience that anybody can speak during a work session. That's recorded. That matters because tonight, the rules were changed again and that matters. Mayor Zinkle learned early on that Coburns can get favors from the city. All they have to do is ask and it shall be given. The sign ordinance 801 was changed in 2006 to add number 128, which allowed triple the signage in B3 districts which Coburns Superstore sits in and of course, our mayor is the manager there and was during that time as well because of a request for additional signage from Coburns and there's 128. From the official city newspaper viewpoint, taxpayers foot the bill when cities take it accord. It would behoove, this is a quote out of that article, "It would behoove all sides to work these matters out before the city attorneys start their meters ticking." Bruce Smith, Bill Anderson, and I did go to council first. It fell on deaf ears as usual. City officials can't afford to make legal mistakes and those who sue need to do so only as a last resort. And I feel it will continue until Kim and the company understand that by not issuing a stop work order to roach to straighten this all out there directly making the city liable for any illegalities. The citizens don't have the first whack at stopping lawsuits. City officials do. First, because they make the decisions that can generate suits. Second, because they are required by law to do what's lawful. And third, because they have the resources to check the law before they act. Whether misconduct or mistake, the people administering our laws know they won't be held liable for misconduct or mistake. If you're part of the in-group, they don't enforce the laws or follow the rules. If you're not, then the law gets followed and they show their power. In a city manager form of government, there's an educated person who might lose their job. In most municipal governments, there are no consequences and audits cost money, so crime has no consequence. And that's from a former law enforcement instructor of 30 years. Little Falls Planning Commission unanimously recommends approving sign ordinance. The proposed amendments included exceptions for signs on city property, even after the zoning administrator said lawyers caution about this. The city had previously faced allegations that the ordinance was not consistently enforced. There is a difference between allegation and documented evidence. Once again, I urge this council to delete the sign ordinance or risk future lawsuits that are sure to come. Today, I sent, actually it was yesterday, I sent a request-
Time's up, Ron. Thank you.
Okay, that's for next time.
Anyone else wish to speak? Here you now move on to regular council items. Dead levy presentation, David? He just walked out, maybe he went on.
For those of you that don't know me, I'm David Brown. I've been the city's financial consultant for, I don't know, 20 years or something like that. Staff suggested that maybe I come to the work session and just talk a little bit about the city's financial condition and debt levels and if in particular, the council had any questions with me, this would be a good time to talk about it. It's been a while since I've done something like this. I think the last time I was here talking in general about financial stuff was way back in 07 when there was a council change and really a lot of concern and angst about city's debt levels that are approaching capital projects and spent quite a bit of time talking about stuff. And we'll talk a little bit tonight on how things may have changed over the last eight or nine years since that time and how things look now compared to then. But we'll say that I'm not here with any particular agenda or message, okay? Have any particular concern or problem to be here? If the council does, you know, this is a good time to talk about it. That's a little different than when I was here in 07 because I think there were some policy issues and concerns to talk about. Thought you'd be interested in, when they had it at the top, just a little bit of history of how things have been changing in Little Falls relative to property values and tax rates over time. Here's a chart that shows how market values have changed going back to 03. You see through the first part of the last decade through about 08, the city experienced nice, strong growth in market value, the value that the county assessor says all the property in Little Falls is worth. We hit 08 and the housing crisis, financial crisis hit the state and it affected the growth of valuations. It stopped them and for the next half decade, generally Little Falls saw a decline. That is true in every community I've worked with, okay? 08 through 13 or so, just, I don't know, community that didn't see at least stopping of value increases. Most saw a decrease, years was about 10%. And now we're starting to see a bump back in valuations here, probably a year later than most of the communities I look at, but it's nice to see that property values are once again rebounding. We're kind of back at 08 levels now. The second column shows tax capacity. That's the measure of taxable value. It converts market value based on property classification. So generally, it tracks with changes in market value. Market value goes up, taxable value is up. Notice a couple of, as your market value dropped in 08, tax capacity dropped. You see a big change in tax capacity from 2012 to 2013 where we lost almost 20% of value. That was caused by the state of Minnesota getting out of these business of subsidizing low values homes property taxes. We used to have something called market value homes to credit where low value homes would have like a third of their property tax paid by the state of Minnesota. The state of Minnesota ran into budget problems. They decided they would stop that program and simply change the formulas for taxation. The net result is tax burden shifted within communities and the cities had to levy more because state money wasn't coming into the communities. Communities that have a high percentage of lower value homes are dramatically influenced by that and that's why you see that almost 20% drop in tax capacity the year following that. On the far right chose the city's property tax rates. In the early part of the last decade, you see slight declines in tax rates while the city's tax base was growing. That's simply stating that Little Falls was growing faster than Little Falls government, okay? And costs of government got proportionately less. When the financial crisis hit in 08, the reverse happened. Your values declined, but government stayed about the same size and that increased property tax rates. And now we're on the trend on the backside of that. We're starting to see some decreases in tax rates as values go down. So that's a little bit of the valuation and tax history for the community. Nothing particularly unusual there, is what I'd expect to see based on other communities. Back in 07, when we had this kind of a discussion, there was concern over city's overall debt levels and the pace at which we were undertaking capital projects. I think much of that concern was founded, okay? When we look at the numbers back in 07, the city had $32 million worth of debt outstanding, which is a fair amount for a community of this size. The good news is the city was paying it off relatively briskly at a pace of about $2.5 million per year. Do the math, that means your projects were being funded over about a 15-year period, which is how we do most of your bond issues, so that fits together. The council had some concerns of growing levels and I don't know if there was a formal policy, but there was certainly an informal understanding that it made sense for the city to cool its heels a bit for a few years, maybe undertake projects at a slower pace and get things under control. I know my policy recommendations at the time was we should at least stabilize our debt, which means if we're paying off debt at $2.5 million a year, we shouldn't be doing new projects at a pace any faster than $2.5 million a year. If we pay it off at the same rate we undertake it, you get stability. What's happened in the community is far more restrained than that. You've been undertaking projects at a much lower than a million dollars per year pace. So in 2015, the city's overall debt is down to about 15 million. That's half of what it was eight years ago. You are still paying off your debt at a fast pace, $2.5 million bucks a year roughly, which means if you keep going, you're gonna have most of the city's debt paid off in five to six years. All things considered, I think that's a pretty good thing. If the city's goal was to get your debt burden under control, you've made remarkable progress. If you keep the trend going, in several more years, you're gonna be at pretty attractive levels. So that's probably the biggest change I see in Little Falls in the past several years is the fact that you have been paying off your debt at a much higher pace than you being added to it and you see the change in the numbers. Right now, the $15 million of debt you have is constituted, is shown in the bottom here. Some of your debt is paid for exclusively with property tax levies. Probably most of that relates to that Public Works Maintenance Building, you know, across the parking lot. That is, most of your debt is related to making the debt payments on that. Debt supported by assessments. There's a net $8 million of that outstanding with a fair amount of cash in the bank waiting to call bonds. That is the debt associated with the projects that we have assessments. In this town, we call that the petitioned projects, okay? And historically, the city does a project like that every year or so. That's much of the reduction in debt has to do with the fact that we do much smaller projects over the last five to six years than we did historically. There's some tax increment that outstanding. Generally, that's gonna be mostly sales supportive and a little bit of revenue debt, so that all adds up to $15 million bucks. Most of the reduction there was in improvement bonds, assessment bonds, and in the bonds that are paid for with your sewer water enterprise operations. That's where most of the debt pays off. Rating agencies always have an interesting perspective on a community's financial condition. We need to take what they say with a grain of salt, okay? The rating agencies care about one thing and one thing only is what's the likelihood you're gonna make your debt payments? They don't really comment too much, are you a well-managed community? Are you making good decisions for your citizens? Their only concern is, are you gonna make your debt payments? Do you have the ability to make your debt payments? And is there any reason you might not make your debt payments? With that in mind, the last time they looked at you, this is what they as a third party observed. Their biggest, I'll say criticism, is that the Little Falls and the Little Falls area continues to have sort of a weak economy. By that, if they look at the valuation of the community, it's a little on the low side of average from what they'd expect to see. Evidence of that, if you look across the state of Minnesota, the average house is valued at about $200,000, okay? If you look across Morrison County, the average house is worth about $150,000. And if you look at Little Falls, the average house is worth about $100,000. That multiplied by all the houses in the community is one of the reasons why the city's valuation is lower than you would normally expect on average. Is that something within the council or the city's control? Truly not, okay? The same thing is true with income levels. You look at other areas of the state compared to Little Falls and Horsett County, income levels are a little bit lower. Why do rating agencies care? Because your debt is ultimately paid for the people that live here. Their ability to pay reflects it, your ability to pay. And these are credit weaknesses and have a dampening effect on credit rating. Again, this is something that you have very little control on, certainly in the short run, and the long run economic development can help in that respect. Declining valuations. Now, that's a criticism they have of everybody for the last half decade. You're not anything special there, but it's certainly a credit negative. They like the fact that this community is managed well and you stick to your budgets. And if you deviate from the budget, you usually end up having a little money left over. They think that's a wonderful thing. As a corollary to that, they love liquidity, a fancy word for cash. The city's cash position has historically been good. You maintain those cash reserves and there's nothing more important in terms of credit strength than maintaining good cash reserves. If a community loses its credit rating suddenly, odds are 95 to 1 that they did something to deplete a great amount of cash in a short period of time. That makes the rating agencies very nervous and they respond immediately with rating downwards. The fact that the city has always made good cash reserves and you continue to do so is your probably most important credit strength. Rating agencies recognize that $32 million is a lot of debt, okay? And they criticize you for it. It's now down around 15, it's getting in the more modest range. They still make comments about it being high and in particular, the fact that a lot of our resources are devoted each year to make and pay enough $2.5 million of the debt. That's also a credit strength because you're not stretching your debt out over lifespans of people. We're paying it off fairly briskly and they like that too. So in one respect, they criticize you for it. On the other hand, they applaud you for it. Your financial advisor applauds you for it. If we do capital projects, we gotta have the courage to make sure we pay for them in our lifetimes and not stretch debt out so that we enjoy the projects and our kids have to pay off our bonds. This community has always done that. I hope you continue to do that. I think that's wise, prudent, moral, financial management. S and P currently rates the city A+. That was based on debt that we did earlier this year. A+ stable means they don't see anything that would concern them or cause them to raise it up or down. As I look down the pike a bit, if you continue to pay off your debt, we'll be making noise to S and P that you just fight a higher rating because I think it's starting to bear out into the numbers, okay? Currently, you're A+. We don't see a change coming in the next year. Terms of general comment, I think I made my first one here. Rating agencies generally aren't commenting on anything other than your willingness and ability to pay your bond payments. And there's a lot more to managing the finances of the city than just making your bond payments. But their comments are appropriate to that end. The other side of it is, communities have a responsibility to meet the needs of their residents, provide the services that your residents and your taxpayers are interested in, and maintain your stuff as it wears out, okay? A lot of the city's capital investment in the past has been in state repairs. It will continue because they have a huge street system. And foregoing needed major maintenance, simply to reduce debt looks good in the short run. In the long run, you simply end up with a backlog of work that needs to get done and you pay for it in the long run. I don't know if the right answer or balance is in Little Falls. We may be right on it. That's why we have councils and policymakers to weigh debt levels versus making sure that we're fixing our stuff as it wears out so that we manage ourselves prudently for the long run. Final comments, and we should have some time for questions, hopefully. Is in 07, I introduced the notion of good debt and bad debt. It was probably an ill-timed choice of words, but I've been reminded of it quite a bit and it served a useful purpose. Not all debt is the same. Some debt is easier to handle than others. The classic example will be if we issue debt in support of someone who wants to plot 50 lots and bring 50 new single-family homes to town and they're gonna pay assessments covering all those debt payments. I'll do all those projects that came across my doorstep because there's very little financial negative to that. Yeah, there's a little bit of debt, but that debt pays for a project that's generating its own revenue to make its debt payments. If we're assessing those costs, those new residents in the community and just those residents are making those bond payments for us. And if we get the added benefit of larger population, a larger tax base, utility customers, certainly the retailers in town appreciate a growing community, everybody wins by that. Same thing is true with commercial industrial projects. If we make investments in infrastructure, it may involve debt, but it brings industry and tax base to town, that generates revenue to cover those debt payments. So that kind of debt, I'd be positively inclined to do, even if we're in a mode to control debt loads. If we can make those types of growth investments in the community and involves debt, it's a necessary evil, okay? The kind of debt that we need to be a little more cautious or restrained about, which I perhaps imprudently call bad debt, is the debt that doesn't do that. It's the kind of debt for projects that are not generating new revenues for the community. The Public Works Maintenance Garage across the parking lot is a good example of a project like that. Was it needed? Yeah. Did it help the efficiencies of the Public Works Department to save a little bit of money? Certainly did, okay? Was it unavoidable? Probably not. But for the most part, all of the costs of the bond payments on that building come out of the city's budget, out of property taxes or utility revenues, okay? Doing a lot of building projects quickly will have a dramatic impact on the city's financial conditions. Not to select your debt levels, but the property taxes and utility rates that we have to increase to cover those costs. So as we look at capital projects and we balance all those factors, is absolute debt important? You bet. And you've cut yours in half in less than a decade. Pretty cool, okay? As you look forward, debt is a tool that can be used to help meet the financial needs in the capital projects that you need to do. Those capital projects that generate new revenues, I encourage you to embrace them. Those that are necessary, street replacement where our assessments are a modest amount, those are hard projects, they're necessary. The council needs to balance those factors out. I'm available to help you understand that, look at some of the impacts of the numbers and I can do that for you too. With that, those are my comments. Any questions, consider?
Any questions for David? Anyone?
David, what do you see for any trends for interest rates? I know it's kind of been a topic and a moving target.
I've been, I'll tell you, my opinion's worth nothing in that area, but I'll tell you what I think. I've been thinking for five years, I expected them to go up and every year, they stay low. So it makes no sense to me. The feds are finally getting to the point where they're feeling comfortable enough that our economy is rebounding, that they're gonna slowly move interest rates up to sort of inflationary levels. That's what they say they're going to do. Most people think that's true. So the market is sort of expecting that. We're not talking big numbers like quarter to half a point stuff over the next year. So if that happens, there might be some impact on the city's cost of borrowing, but it's probably already somewhat built into the numbers anyhow because people expect that to happen, okay? But we live in a big, unforeseen world. If war breaks out in the Middle East and all hell happens in Europe, money flows to safe locations and that's the United States. We've seen that several times in the last decade. If that kind of turmoil happens, we could very easily see the feds put the brakes on, all sorts of market for our bonds and we can see rates stay down low. So we can't really predict that. I look for them to go up and I've been wrong for five years, so we'll see, okay?
Well, David, I believe last year and the year before, thanks to your expertise, you recommended that we take advantage of the lower rate and we saved $125,000 or something like that. So as long as we take advantage of it, I don't know if that's a possibility, there's not a lot we can do about that.
No, you try to make educated judgments about what makes sense to do, okay? Fortunately, most of it worked out over the last few years, so it's good.
Anyone else? Well, I'm just wondering, is there, with all the stuff coming up with the water plant, is this already something that's taken care of or do we need to look at? I mean, it's a lot of money. So do we borrow now while we know they're down or how is that? What's the functionality of that process?
We talked a little bit, and I talked with David about it a little bit, and the potential of doing what's called a PFA loan through Minnesota Public Utilities or-
Yep. Public Facilities, in other words.
Public Facilities. So we've talked a little bit about doing something like that. They tend to have, not, the closing costs aren't as high and they tend to have a little bit better rate and you can use them for water and sewer type projects. I don't know that we legally can go out and bond now. If we go out and bond now for a project, we have, and I don't remember, is it 18 months? We have to spend the money and there's a certain time period, if I recall correctly, that the money has to be spent.
You're right. There are complicated set of rules that the feds institute to prevent you from borrowing money early and reinvesting it and making money. That's their motivation. But Laura's comments are right. Just in thinking of the best source of funding for those projects, the state of Minnesota is a big lender for water and wastewater projects. They have a fair amount of 1% money out there and I can't find you 1% money anywhere else, okay? So it makes sense to queue up, go through the application process. They have a lot of money. My guess is state PFA loans are probably the best source of funding for the project. That aside, if I had a project that's two years out, would I borrow the money for it now? If you're really, really, really risk averse, you might do that, okay? But recognize if we borrow $1 million at, city's borrowing costs probably 3% for discussion purposes and sit on it, it costs us $30 a year just in interest expense plus the money that you had to spend early to borrow it. So borrowing money a couple of years earlier, we're $60 behind the curve already on $1 million. If it's a $10 million project, we're $600,000 behind the curve in terms of interest expense. That's a big enough number to probably be scared of, okay? You probably wouldn't borrow money for that project ahead of schedule unless you really, really are convinced that rates are really gonna fly up, in which case, it's probably too late anyhow because the market's faster than you are on that prediction. Or you have the kind of project that absolutely- Or you have the kind of project that absolutely doesn't work if interest rates move up. And that's typically not the situation you're in in a water or wastewater project. You might be in that, if you were borrowing for a housing project, it might apply, but probably not for something like this. So yeah, we should keep an eye on the financial markets and think about it, but generally speaking, I think the proper way to go is to continue with your plans and queue up for the state money. You will very likely get it, and my guess is that's the best course of funding source for the project.
Anyone else? Thanks, David.
We'll have somebody back here at your next meeting. I think at your last meeting, you scheduled a bond sale for this year's petition project. I learned today that it will not be me, I'm going to be in search of that day, but somebody from my company will be here, so that's on the air.
Signors, amendments?
I'm going to first through these quick. We had, we know the informational meeting on November 2nd, that prompted some amendments to the sign ordinance. We presented those to the planning commission in a public hearing on the 9th. The planning commission heard those amendments and recommended approval of those amendments as well. Some of the changes to the current sign ordinance, we removed the distinction of op-remis signs. We had separate requirement for flag versus signs. The signs that are one-half square foot, so essentially half a piece of paper, those are now exempt. We did add language in there from what you currently saw beforehand about illuminated signs. We have a light intensity, so we've had to qualify what is an illuminated sign. We do have a 45-day permit in residential properties, so you can get one permit per year, 45 days for an illuminated sign. Basically, it says 60-watt light bulb, so 800 lumens or less is what would be allowed in that situation. In B3 district, we added some language that if you're within 100 feet of Trump Highway 10 and 371, you get, you're allowed a freestanding sign of 300 square feet or less, but that's again within 100 feet of Trump Highway 371. In a nutshell, that's kind of what we had for the sign ordinance amendments. I will also note that if we do get an eighth member tonight, we can pass the sign ordinance. If we do, if we don't, it will be an introduction tonight and then passing at your next council meeting. So any questions on that?
Any questions for Greg? Okay.
Joe Hatton with the next airport item. Tonight, we are looking at approval of the acquisition property for the Roman Protection Zone. Up on the screen behind me, you can kind of see there's a 20-acre parcel on the northwest side of the airport. The airport commission today recommended approval of that property acquisition. If you recall, we purchased the property just to the east of that for future crosswind runway, and then we also purchased the property on the south down here further to the spring. So the final component of this is this purchase of this parcel. You can see on the southeast side, we've got this trapazoid area. So in the event if there's ever an airplane that can't get off the ground, there's a protection zone free of any type of structures or anything like that. We're looking to complete that on the north side as well. It was kind of a change in the FAA's and the state's determination on what you can have in that area, which kind of prompted the acquisition of this parcel. We've got that on the regular agenda tonight for your consideration.
Fuel dispenser?
We went out to get some quotes on fuel dispenser. We've been having a lot of issues with the fuel dispenser there. We did receive quotes from a couple of contractors, so we'll be looking at replacing that. There is a state grant available, if I remember, it's a 60/40 split on that. In the model, about $27,000 is the overall project cost, and I'd have to look exactly what the split is, I believe 50%, 40% is the city cost. But I'll have that on your next council agenda board on that, so we can get that up and running. It does make the fuel system EMV compliant and all those new chips on the credit cards, it'll be compliant with that at that point in time as well.
So 60/40, then it's 20/20 with the COME2 or no?
Correct, yep.
Any questions? Lock 103rd Edition, Ali?
With this item tonight, please, I'm just looking for a council consensus on it. I got a call from an individual, turn the distance between 7th and 8th Avenue Southwest and 6th and 7th Streets Southwest. You can kind of see there's what I'll call a cart path here. This is actually a platted alleyway. You can see the telephone poles here both on each side. We have plowed this in the past, but as you can see in the back, there's two large oak trees that we actually have to weaver out. And so I'd like to get, you know, council permission or agreement that we send out letters to the property owners to either A, make it an alley like the other alleys in town, or B, vacate it such that we don't plow it. Because leaving it like this, we have, you know, we have run into, you know, trees in the past, there's a fence, human fence on the other side of the property line there. They're obviously allowed to have that. But in order to get our plow trucks through there, it's extremely tight. So I'd like to either make that an alley or vacate it so the property owners would then have the area back there as their yard if they wanted to.
If the alley, trees would probably be down.
Trees would go and the gravel would come in, so yeah, it would, you know, just like a regular alley, that would be straight.
Is there a garage act system in our end of that lot?
There is. On this lot here, there's a carport over here, and this individual here actually was bringing in a building permit. So they want to actually add on to this garage here, get access to it. So I'd like to send out a letter to all those individuals on the lot, just asking them what their opinion is on the alley, if they'd like to have it as an alley with the gravel like you see here on the rest of town, or have it vacated. To me, it doesn't matter one way or another, but the way it sits right now, it doesn't work for the maintenance side of, I think it's extremely difficult to maintain that.
Todd?
Can we have the one who had an issue with the leaves or something? Lose responsibility of us to clean it up because the trees were in the alley?
Yeah, we have had that as well. You know, my take on it would be, it's very similar to bollard trees. We don't go around cleaning up the bollard trees. It would be the property owner that bothers us. But if we vacate it, I don't know, that tree would be on somebody's property, they would be on the tree of the box if we maintained it. If we make it an alley where we actually bring in the gravel, that particular tree in question would then be removed. We'll do a little bit of special agents later to clear the alley.
I'd hate to see us take all healthy trees, then I would say vacant or leave the trees. So I'd be, I'd be sure to check and see if the neighbors have access to the alley.
And they could look at, well, he would, the neighbor on the very south would need access and the neighbor on the very north would need access. They would still be able to have half of that alley as there's, when you vacate it, half goes to one side, half goes to the other. But I'd be curious to see what the neighbors position on in terms of if they want to.
Set of orders? Concept of change, control cable franchise.
In terms, in our renegotiation for the franchise agreement with Charter, they have been acquired by another company. They want us to ensure that in the resolution, we acknowledge that and that the negotiations will continue with the next company as they move forward, so that would be part of the agenda moving.
Didn't they pull it up before? Weren't they going to change and then change their mind?
Yep, and I think the change, the new companies are different, so they don't know exactly what name it's going to be. So they just say, acknowledge it as Charter, but they don't know what the name is.
Anyone else got anything, your other?